All right, I'm gonna share my screen. Do you see that Joe?
Yes.
Great, awesome, awesome, okay. Then I will begin to present. There we go, is that better? You see full screen now?
Looks good.
All right, sounds great, all right, well. Thank you everybody for coming. Who is watching right now on Facebook Live or is watching later on recording. We plan to have this pre-recorded as well, so we'll put it up on our website. S R Transit dot org slash service changes, so that's a one-stop shop for everything related to these service changes that we're going to be going over tonight. As well as the video also be linked there as well, so. The great place to go if you want to refresh some of what we've gone over, if you want to watch the video again, if you want to focus on one or two routes that you want to look at, so. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. And listening in or watching remotely. Yeah, I'll first introduce myself, my name is Brendan. I'm a transportation planner with S R Transit District. Operators of both the previous Middletown area transit as well as nine town transit. We have recently merged as of July twenty twenty-two, so we're now a one big happy family, we'll be announcing our new new member brand soon, coming out next week, it's Tuesday, so be on the lookout for that, but for right now, for the time being. You may know us as the Middletown providers as well as nine town transit providers, so. We're excited today to talk about some of our awesome changes, but also on the call here today, I also have our executive director, Justice Comerford, who can. Also introduce himself briefly as well if you'd like.
Hi everyone, thanks for coming. And we're excited to show these proposals and. As we hear, we're very clear that they are proposals. And we're happy and excited to get everyone's feedback, so we can. Modify them and. Come out with the best possible changes in the future.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that Joe, again, I want to really. Hammer that point home to that, you know, the, and I'll be mentioning throughout the entire presentation, but. These are, you know, these are our flexibility, they're not final designs, so we do want to hear your feedback, because it will help us inform. How we go forward, so please, please, please take the opportunity to. You know, learn from this presentation, but then also make sure you fill our online survey. We'll be sending some links in the Facebook Live as well as you can find it on our website, again, S R Transit dot org slash service changes. We're right there, we can fill out a survey, that's the best way to get your feedback, so have opportunity to write. As much as you like about adding all the routes and your schedule changes, anything you want, there's a space to write about, so that's our best way to get it. We record it, we can look at it and analyze it later, so please. Take the time to do that. I'll also mention this time as well as that we'll be having folks looking at the. Facebook comments, and so during this Facebook Live period, if you have a comment or a question especially, feel free to leave it there. We'll be having folks. My name is Dennis Slade, you see his profile, he works for us, he's a, he's a great student with both, he's been working with us on these route changes, and so he'll be answering any questions he can. So we're recording comments and questions that we can use later, and so. At this presentation, there'll be a Q and A period where we can go with some questions related to the service changes and. And I can be happy to answer those if I can, as well as interclicking additional comments that way, so. I'll also mention too, we have. The ability as well to translate there any Spanish speakers you would like to type in. Spanish in the Facebook Live as well, that also works, we want to make sure that. You can hear as many people as possible, so we'll have someone translating questions as well and responses if need be, so. Everybody can have an opportunity to, to give their feedback, which is important to us, so. I want to get those caveats out of the way before we delve into it. But again, we'll also be having two other meetings this week, so if you'd like to attend one in person. We have one tomorrow at the Clinton Town Hall in the green room, six thirty. P M, and then we also have one on Thursday in the Middletown. City Hall Council Room from six P M as well, so if you want to, you know, also be in person as well, feel free to come to those, we'd love to see you there as well, so. With that, I'll continue on, I also said that this is a pretty substantial presentation, so hopefully. Well, you know, we wanted to err on the side of more information than not enough, so. I apologize if it's a little friend a little long, we want to make sure we give you guys good information, so. Again, feel free, if you're watching this video as a recording, you know, if you want to skip to, you know, a certain route that you're most interested in, like if you take one day and. You know, the others, that's fine too, but happy to have you come by and watch the entire thing as well, so feel free to use this video. As best suits you, so it starts our agenda today, so. I kind of go over what we have planned for today, I want to start with giving you guys a little bit of context behind the, the changes, so the way they came from. Public outreach that was done. Several years ago when the plan first came out, as well as what's being done currently now, and will continue to be done after this meeting. I will then go over the proposed schedule changes. And then we'll be going over the proposed route changes, so we'll start with the schedule, then move on to the routes. I'll go one by one on the routes, so again, that, that session will take a little while, but again, we wanted to make sure that we can talk about each of the routes a little more in depth. In this meeting and sort of give everybody heads up about what our proposed changes are, again. Or how again, the schedule and routing changes are not still defined yet, so we do want to hear feedback today, it'll help inform our decisions, so again. All the reason to make sure you fill out a survey at the end. And then we'll be doing a Q and A at the end as well, once we finish wrapping the presentation. So folks have questions and answers, we can look in the Facebook Live and see if there are any that were unanswered, make sure we address those. And then move on as well, you know, I'd say if you have any other questions, we can address that later as well, so then finally, we have. You know, I want to just have it again, please give feedback before you leave. To make sure that you have, you filled out a survey, that we can collect your feedback, and now we have it, so that's, that's again, that's the best way to collect your. Your input today. All right, so then I will start with today with some context for the proposed changes, so. Both the route and schedule changes, initially from the Lower Connecticut River Rally Transit Study. Which was in developing conjunction with River Cog, our, our Regional Planning Agency. That also include a lot of inputs from riders. And this plan was sort of a larger plan, it didn't focus on, on these changes, but also focused on larger issues for transit in the region in general, right, so it was a more. Large document that looked at, you know, other things, it even recommended the official merger of nine town and middle town, right, so that, that came out of that document. It also includes, you know. New maintenance and operational facilities in the future, as well as new funding, so new sources as well as funding allowed, so. It was a larger, larger transit document, that was sort of a way to move forward for the future for our transit system, and. You know, we did a lot of great public feedback on that, so. We're happy with that plan, so this is sort of us implementing some of the major things coming out of that plan now, so. This is one, one major piece of the puzzle when it comes to the implementing the, the vision from the Lower Connecticut River Valley Transit Study, so I recommend folks to check out our website. As well as River Cog website, where you can find not only this document, but other documents related to the transit studies, you can kind of. Get a better context of where these changes are coming from, so I recommend folks, if they're interested in these changes, to view those documents as well. I also say, yes, as I touched on as well, there are other recommendations beyond just the route changes, kind of changes today. All right, so yeah, I'll touch on briefly, so as I mentioned, as part of this. This transit study, there is initial public outreach done. Again, so it was, it was pretty comprehensive, we talked to a lot of different riders. Through, you know, through tables, doing route rides, you know, a lot of the things we're doing today, get some feedback. And you know, one of the main things that kept on coming up was that we heard from, from riders that, you know, obviously, everybody wants more frequency. And wants new services, and so do we, and that's sort of largely a funding issue, but one thing that we can do that. Doesn't, isn't massively impacted by funding is improvements to existing service, right, so. If you don't have the funding to massively increase frequency or. Or add a bunch of new services, at least we can make the existing services a little better, so that's sort of what the. The whole impetus for this, this project was, is to improve, we have now. A cost-effective way to make, hopefully make a big difference to riders in their everyday, in their everyday. Travel, so again, just to get in highlight here, we have sort of a small graphic here of some books that again, both Middletown and Nineteen Orange did prioritize, you know. Improving existing service, and we see this as one way of improving existing service. So again, these are just, yeah, I'm not going to go over each and every one of these, just some of the main points we saw. From our plans, so all this information is in that, that transit study, so recommend again, folks check this out, but again. It highlights some of the things that we saw. And these comments helped. Us along with the consultant team develop these initial proposed designs that you'll see tonight, okay, so for example, if you look at. We have Route five eighty-one, five eighty-three, there was, there was a desire for many riders to stream on the source to make it run faster and more, you know, have increased on-time performance. So you'll see that reflected in our design as I say, go through it, so keep these things in mind that. You know, that these proposals, pros, routes didn't come out of nowhere. They came out of, you know, one, our observation that's a transit district, but also from riders as well, and their wants and desires, and so. These may have changed, which is why we're doing the second round of a public input, right, because these were done a year, a couple of years ago. In twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, so we wanted to do another round. Now that we're actually implementing it, or hopefully we'll implement some of these changes, right, so. That's sort of the, the impetus from some of our, our designs. I'll also mention on what's happening today for public outreach, like I mentioned, we want to do that second round of public input. And so currently, you are watching one of the three public meetings, I'm also, like I mentioned earlier, between one and Clinton. On tomorrow, on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth at six thirty P M. As well as one on March thirtieth, Thursday, in the Middletown City Hall and Council Room again, so this is one of three public meetings. We're also, we've already conducted many tables at Transit Centers, we've been doing many more for the coming, coming weeks and months. We're also doing route rides and all, all, all the different routes to make sure we hear from riders who ride the actual routes every day, right, the best way to get feedback on. Our changes in my mind is to actually ride the routes or go to the Transit Centers, and if you talk to riders. That's who we really want to hear from. And we also have an online webpage. And information for folks to, to give their feedback, and we've already received a lot of the responses so far from the webpage. We hope that more people check the webpage, a lot of information I'll speak about today will also be in that webpage again, that's S R Transit dot org slash service changes, so again, please check that out. And again, fill out the online survey, so we can. You know, look at the feedback. All right, so I will start today with the schedule changes for Middletown and Estuary. The shoreline region, starting with Middletown. So as many, maybe for Milton riders may know, currently. Middletown routes come in around every fifty minutes or so, right, so we know that most of the roads come every fifty minutes. This, this can however, you know, from our feedback and just from our research, if it can lead to some schedule confusion. You know, it doesn't come at a, at a neat time, they come at different times throughout the day. And often also, some of our routes have a hard time getting back on time in that fifty minutes, excuse me, sorry, I'm only going off, I gotta. Stand up here to let the lights back on, there we go, that might happen a few times today, so I apologize if that does. So this leads to some schedule confusion as well, some routes often running late. So we want, so one thing we're proposing to do is to transition to a sixty-minute clock face pulse of the terminal, so what that means is. The bus would leave the, the downtown terminal at, you know, six A M, seven A M, eight A M, nine A M, nice clean clock face. Departure times that we want, it's easier to know. When, when the bus is going to be leaving, but what we really think is the big benefit, it allows. A little more time, ten extra minutes for these buses to get to the terminal on time. This is critical, not only just for on-time performance, but I think riders appreciate. But it's also critical to allow for opportune time for transfers. Many of our riders get to the terminal on one bus and transfer on another bus. And so this ten minutes allows that time for that ten minutes for people to transfer from bus to bus. Also in our operationally to benefit because it allows our, make sure our drivers can use the bathroom, make sure they can, you know, drink a water or do a free trip and post-ship inspection, so. There's a lot of reasons why we want to go to sixty minutes, and one thing, you know, I want to highlight as well is that, you know, isn't really much, it's, it's no cost savings for us, and this, it's more. Seeing how it runs to be done throughout the day, it's more just to. We think it'll, it'll be a benefit to operate, to operate this way, right, so for all the mentioned reasons, so. It's not a cost thing, it's a, it's a more efficient thing, it's a simpler thing, and ultimately. It'll improve on-time performance, and I think. Make a much better system, and I think riders would be happy with it, and my initial responses so far, I've heard from riders, for the most part, been very positive to this change, so. But again, we want to hear your feedback on that, if you, if you conceive foresee problems with it, or you like it, we want to hear it. So please, that's, that's, that's sort of the major schedule changes for Middletown. Thanks for going to the shoreline, so. Yeah, this is also a little more complicated, so I'll try and break it down, basically. Current, currently, as many of our shoreline riders might know, or previous nine town riders, is how we, we. Characterize it, the nine town systems, and there isn't a lot of great opportunities for transfer times on some of the routes, and so it's hard for people to, to transfer from one end to the other. Whereas in Middletown, you have that central terminal, right, where you can get from one bus to the other, and it's right, right next to you, and it's, they'll come in, most of them come in at the same time. So what we're trying to have, basically what we're trying to make happen is have the old civic train station bus stop kind of act like the Middletown Terminal. Kind of have it be like a pulse system, so throughout six forty-one, six forty-two, six forty-three, and six forty-four, all the routes that, you know, touch Old Sabre Train Station in some fashion. As well as a potential new route six forty, which I'll talk about a little bit later. Would all, would all start. From this old slipper train station, so they would act as. Sort of a de facto Middletown Terminal, so where, you know, if I, once we pull into the, to the, the train station bus stop. I can move from one bus to another. Easily, so that's sort of what we're looking at there, and it allows for transfer time, so it's a great opportunity, we think, to really, really improve the system. And allow it to, uh, allow accurate transfer times, so time to wait half an hour for the next bus to come by, so we think it'll be a much better improvement. And much less time for people waiting for transfers, which we see is definitely an issue. So with that, I will sort of give, all kind of give the next introduction to the route changes. Again, these were made from our consultant team. In conjunction with us, as well, as well, we're based in public input, as I showed earlier. Again, we, so the route designs we're about to show you were made in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, so even since then. We sort of had an evolving of thinking on some of the routes. So you'll see, some of the routes. You'll see might be a little outdated, and even in our mind. But even still, we still want your feedback on what's presented to you today. And we, we also might be thinking the same thing, so you might be pointing something out that we also see a flaw in, right, but we still want to hear your feedback, so we can have it, so. Just know that even we know that some of these things, we want to tweak ourselves already. So with additional feedback, we can, we can further refine these routes to make them best, so. Please note again, these are, are, we, we like, we like a lot of the ideas presented to these routes, we do know that we want, we want to still figure some things out, some of these routes. And again, these designs are not final, I'll be saying that a lot, but these are not finally, things can be changed based on feedback, which is why I want to hear your feedback. And again, all this information is available on our website, all right, so with that, I will. Delve into our first route here. Just Route five eighty-one, and so for this first, I'm going to highlight some of the formatting of how this is presented first. Because they're all very similar, so I'm going to, going to give you a breakdown of how it's, how it looks, so. As you can see in the top left, there is a map there, the smaller map, that's the route today, right, so that's the existing route, that's how it currently operates today. The bigger box with the bigger route. That is what recommended alignment, that is what is being proposed, so that's what being proposed. The smaller square is what it currently is today, right, so you can see the differences already. So again, I will also mention that. So there also, there's some text down here, it'll also be present throughout the. All the different changes, proposed changes, so you can see sort of what some of the major, you know, highlight points are of, of the change, you know, of the routes. So one thing I'll start to, it's important to pour a delve into five-one specifically is. Especially in Middletown, a lot of what we try to do for some of these routes is to introduce something called bidirectional service. What that means is, more simply put, is for us on both sides of the street. This is what that means, is, you know, you can grab the bus either end, on either end of the street, it'll make it a lot more convenient for many riders. So if you follow me for a second, if you can see, if you can see my cursor, hope you can, otherwise this point will be a little bit moot, but. Let's say we start the Middletown Terminal, right, so I'm going to take you through, this is first, this is first route, so we start the terminal, you go down. Here we are, we go up through, you know, C V H, come back around, come back down, here's the stop and shop, trying to help, or you sort of where the route is, it's hard to tell sometimes, and I rather zoomed out. Here we are in Stop and Shop, coming back down. Moving towards the medical centers on Sabre Road, back down. Going to Millsix Community College, doing that same loop, coming back down. And here we are, at the apartments, and now. We do the exact same thing coming up, but in the reverse direction, right, so now here we are at the. At the school, here we are at the medical centers, and then goes all, you know, all the way back up. So that's sort of our thought is that to have it, and that's what we mean by bidirectional services, first on both ends of the street. Serving basically the same areas it served on either inbound or outbound, right, so that's sort of what that concept is. That can be a little confusing, hopefully I did a decent enough job explaining the basis of that. But in order to make those things happen, for example, the five eighty-one. We'd have to just continue route segments on Millbrook Road and Randolph Road, which are right here. So as you can see, this is sort of what we are today, it's the big loop around here, that loop will be removed, so it's just direction in both sides of the street instead. What we noticed is that there's very little, so keep in mind, the stop ship will be served in both areas, don't worry, that the route down here. This part, portion of the route, we see very little ridership. And if we remove that section, it allows a much more efficient, we believe, service. With the bidirectional service, which is something that people have been, have been asking for, sort of on both sides of the street, so. Wherever we can implement it, some of these routes, it just doesn't work, whenever we could implement it, we wanted to. In these proposed route changes, so that's one thing that to keep in mind. But again, as you can see for this route, all the major stops are still being hit here, so you still have, you know, all the shots that are just mentioned, so. This, this is a little more in-depth to this particular one, but I wanted to give you guys. Sort of a good explanation for the start of this route, because similar design concepts will be seen throughout many of the different routes we go for, so. So here as well, we have here is a sample schedule, again, this is a very rough sample schedule, this is just sort of behind the scenes look. These are not finals, just for what it could look like, so again, just a little sneak peek there, nothing. Just give you a behind the scenes curtain, so what we're looking at with this new alignment. But I'll focus more here on the actual route changes themselves, so. For the five eighty-two, we'll, we'll touch on next, and there also, this is one of the change routes there, I hadn't sort of proposed, that one of the biggest changes here. Again, like five eighty-one, as you can see, there's a real emphasis on removing those big loops you can see in town. Up by, you know, Russell Street Ridge Road, that's again, we see there's not a lot of ridership there, there is some. And also we're looking to implement, again, the bidirectional service, so there's the service on both ends of the street. Again, it'll do the same exact patterns before, coming back up and down, right? One thing I will mention though, that I think is important, and hopefully highlights the fact that we, that, you know, we do listen to feedback, is. One thing we have heard already is that there's been a lot of folks who, who do, we've heard from them saying, well. You know, they do have a problem with removing the Randolph and Ridge Road portions of, of the route, we've heard that some people, you know, do use that stop often, and so. Now we're looking at ways that we can maybe change this route to still serve that and get on time, right, so again, just, just to hide the fact that. We do want to hear your feedback, because if we can make it work, we'll try, if it's possible, right, so, so we want to hear everybody's feedback. But again, I want, I want to stress that. With route planning in general, is that it, it's a, it, it takes, it's challenging, because you have to factor in. You know, time for the route, you have to factor in getting to as many key destinations as possible, so it's about trying the most service. And most amount of time that you can, so there is that trade-off between, between time and service, and also factoring in traffic, so there's lots to consider. When developing this route, so we would do the best we can to serve as many places as we can, while also getting there on time, right, so it's that constant struggle, that push and pull, so. Again, but we still want to hear it, everybody's feedback on this, so again, so, so these portions here. Russell Ridge will be removed, and this portion of Randolph Road will be removed to allow for the bidirectional service. We also, right here, you see Santangelo Circle and the Dario Road, that would not be removed entirely, that would be replaced with the five eighty-three. The, which I'll show next, if I were to, if we were going to pick up that spot, that wouldn't be removed entirely from the service, that if I were to, if you would take that portion instead. And then, as you can see, it will still go to. Wesleyan Hills, as it does before, and D S S, and go right back up and do the same, same portion of it before, so again. That's highlighting the, the bidirectional aspect of, of the routing there. All right, we will head on to five eighty-three, another significant change here. We realized with the five eighty-three, one of the main destinations for many riders is the Washington Street Shops, right, that comes as no surprise, the. The price shop, the, all the, those shopping centers are, are, are not the only destinations on this route, but definitely one of the major ones, and so. What we want to do with this row is make it easier to get there in a more timely, efficient manner. Another goal of the five eighty-three is also to improve access to Wesleyan, we noticed that right now. The five A three and many of our other routes don't serve the campus very well, and so in this alignment up here, as you can see. We would potentially move, if we can, we'd like to drive through Willis Ave, or somehow serve the Wesleyan area better. So we get students can use the bus more frequently, as many students don't have access to cars, we want to make sure they can still get access to the downtown shops and. Whatever they need. We also then go down Long Lane, go through Tantangelo Circle, go up West Street, and then come back on Washington Street and still hit those shops. And the turnaround would be near Sacramento Hills, we'd still absolutely serve Sacramento Hills, will be removed in this scenario, would be Camp Street. Cogden, and then Ball fault road, this, this big sort of rectangle here. We notice is a lot of riders, it's often a waste of time for them, who were really just trying to get to the Washington Street Shops, they have to come in. And I take, you know, fifteen minutes to go all the way around. And it's just an extra roadblock to get to Washington Shops, and don't see a lot of ridership up there, now it's not zero, we know, we know that people do get on there, so again, it's that balance of. You know, providing a more convenient and faster service for most, but. There is that trade-off of potentially, you know, removing service here, so again, why wouldn't you hear people feedback today? On those things, but we have so far, many people do like the, the faster. Direction to the Washington Street Shops, but again, we do want to hear from folks about that, about that change. So again, that's sort of, again, it'll be bidirectional service here as well, as mentioned for the first two. Starts on both ends of the street here, unlike this front, which is a big loop, right, this is a big, long loop. This would be a tighter, faster, bidirectional service in both directions of the street. And so that's the basic design concept for the five eighty-three. All right, five eighty-four. Luckily, it looks like right now, we won't have to remove any circuit, which is excellent, and the five eighty-four is, it's in seventy-four, is a. Is a good, in fact, we're actually looking about adding service base in the actual ten minutes we get from the proposed schedule changes. The first, which of being is adding improved north end access, which we're very excited about. You know, be honest, improve the north end access, allowing it to be bidirectional, which we propose in, in, in the, the north end. That would mean, so if I live in the north end today. And I want to get to the downtown terminal, or downtown Middletown, for example. And I want to use the bus, I would have to catch the bus right here on High Street. Go all the way up to Cromwell, do the entire route, come all the way back down, then on Washington Street, then I'm getting to the terminal. And the new proposal, you just wait for it to come all the way back down and just catch the end of it, so. You know, a forty-five minute ride turns into a five-minute ride, so that's going to be hugely things connecting people to downtown, who are in the north end, so we're, we're very excited about that. As well as we plan to actually. Drive more into the actual north end itself, and down more streets like Grand Street and others to actually. Improve the access of, of north end as well for folks, so it's easier to get on. So we're very excited about that introduction, as well as up north, we're looking and Cromwell, we're looking to add. We're finding, we're still working through the best ways to serve a Cromwell Apartments better. For those who don't know, the Cromwell Apartments are sort of a big dense. There are a lot of apartment complexes there, and currently it's not being served well by, by transit, so. We're looking to find the best way to sort of drive partially through there, all the way through there, and, and still make it on time, so we're working through that now, so again. Any feedback on that would also be appreciated as well, you know, it, would there be a need there, you know, anything that, that, that you can help us with, we would appreciate. Any thoughts on the route in general, but for the most part, this one's staying largely the same, as you can see, it still serves Newfield Street, that's the main purpose of the route. It'll still go to the Stop and Shop and the, and the Price. And all that stuff, so it'll still hit the main areas that you're used to hitting, right, so it's, it's, largely saying the same is actually improving access in the north end and Cromwell. So next, I'll touch on Route five eighty-five, so. This one also is not changing very much, changes very little. The biggest change you can see is up here in Berlin Road and Cromwell, so you know, for, for. Context, here's the Walmart, here's the FedEx, sort of help you orient yourself. Instead, so currently, we, we go on the highway, right, here we go up, and then come down Route nine. Or instead proposing is we continue going forward on Berlin Road, and then catching Route nine later. But we think this will, do we think this will save time, because we often have a lot of traffic accidents up here. You know, accidents coming up, which often makes this route. Run late, in fact, the biggest issue for this route, it's one of our most popular routes. The biggest issue for this route is, is timing and getting it on time, I think many of our riders who use this route will know that. It's a great route, but it often is, is late, and that can cause issues with transfers and everything else, so we think that this. Keep, you know, going a little more forward on Berlin Road, keeping going, going back. And catching on here later, will be, will be a better and slightly, slightly faster way of getting to down, getting to downtown. What it'll also do is it'll also provide some servers coming back this way. So we'll actually provide, we won't be able to pull into Stop and Shop, it'll go past Stop and Shops, if you need to go there on the five eighty-five, you could, you know. You know, request a stop, and if you can pull over safely, get you close to Stop and Shop, right, so it does provide a little more access, in fact. Something I talked with one rider recently, he actually really appreciated that, that new potential access to Stop and Shop coming down that road, so. Again, it's, it's sort of a small, small added benefit as well, that we also be increasing a little bit of service in the Berlin Road area as well, so. That's also a good thing in my mind. So with that, I will move on to the five eighty-six. This route, I'll be honest with you, and Joe can attest as well, this, this is a tough route for us to, to handle it full transparency, but we have a lot of different ideas in this route. But there were a few objectives we nearly wanted to tackle with this design, first and foremost. No more A N P M routing, we've, we, we think that it's really important, and, and that it has one set routing throughout the entire day. Does not change in the morning or at night. We've heard it's confusing from riders, and we agree, so we're going to have one set routing throughout the day, that, that's the first thing, okay? The second thing we need to, we need to try and make it do is to run under an hour, or, you know, around an hour, so it can transfer with the rest of the buses, right, so if we're moving to that. If we're able to move to that, that hour schedule in Middletown, we want to make sure it gets to under an hour, so it can transfer with the other buses, right? This is also important that if one day, you know, fingers crossed, we do get fun to increase the service to be hourly, hourly the same as the other routes, considering throughout the day. It would then be easier to implement as well, so this is, it's really a key issue for us to try and get this down to an hour. Today, it sometimes can, but it's, it's very tight, so we need to find a ways to make the route a little faster. Once, the one thing we're looking at doing is removing the North Main Street portion right here, as you can see, near the, like there. We get very little, very little ridership. According to our drivers, and it seems to be the case as well for many of our riders who agree, when they see this change, that. Nothing really happened, not much happens up there, that'll save us some time. We also wanted to make sure that we still serve the. The Senior Center and Public Library of East Hampton, so we're finding the best ways to do that. There's a potential, the issue with that is, we're having a hard time finding a good turnaround, so the bus needs enough room to turn around, and. There's not a lot of room down there to do that, so we have to take a longer deviation to get that done. We're also looking at, potentially, we don't see a lot of riders coming up this way as well, towards the light drive turn around by the Dollar General. So all these things we're trying to weigh to see, you know. What the most efficient routing is, right, so this one, we're still definitely. Kind of mulling over and finding the best route, which is all the reason why we want your feedback on this, right, so. Do you see riders up in, up in this area, do you not, do you see? You know, a, a need for Middletown Ave, so, so all, all these kind of, all this kind of information will be very helpful to us. The five eighty-six, it's just the one that's more challenging for us, but we, we have some great ideas before, and we, we think. My, what we do, it'll be a better route, because we know the route today is, is in pretty rough shape, so. We think that, um, we can definitely come out with a much more improved route, and to start, we can guarantee you that it'll be A N P, it will be no more A N P M, there'll be one. Set routing throughout the day, unless we hear feedback, otherwise, but so far, everybody loves the idea of having it as one route. Throughout the day instead of two different routes during the morning and night. So that's the five eighty-six, I'll move on to the five ninety here. Five ninety weekday is not changing very much at all. The major changes to five ninety are happening on the weekend, so. Currently, the weekend alignment, it goes on Saturday, it goes to the Merida Mall, and then it goes all the way up. On ninety-one, and goes to the FedEx, the Walmart, and does basically the five eighty-five route that I showed a couple of slides ago. So does that northern portion of Cromwell hits the Walmart, hits the FedEx. We're proposing to remove that because the five eighty-four, five eighty-five compound around Saturday already does that exact route, so it's basically. Duplicate of service. And right now, we, the five ninety on the weekend on Saturday is always over an hour, and it's always late, and. And right now, we, the five ninety on the weekend on Saturday is always over an hour and it's always late. And so. We need to make up some time there to make sure it can come on the hour and isn't getting behind all day, right? Which we see it happen a lot now. So that's sort of our plan there is to remove that portion. And one other thing we're looking at as well, and we want to hear your feedback on is the. Whether or not we keep Merit Mall service, we've noticed that ridership has declined there in previous years, but there's still some ridership there we see. So. That's something we want your feedback on is the Merit Mall. It'll make it a, make it easier to get there on time if we remove it, but also we know that some people use it. So. It's not where we want, there's a trade off for, and so we want to hear from people about. So yeah, please keep your comments on that as well. So next, those are the middle town routes. So you take, I'll take a quick drink here, a drink of water here. So those are the middle town routes. I'm now going to transition to the. Shoreline routes, otherwise known as nine town transit routes for folks who use that system. I'll start today with our. A new route we're proposing to add, which is Route six forty. Okay, so this route serves many purposes, but the major purpose that serves. Is it allows us to actually make the proposed shoreline schedule from the train station, that thing I mentioned earlier. This thing is what makes it all work. So that this route will be, it'll be nearly impossible to do what we want to do for the schedule. So it's a very important route to us in that regard. So what it would do is it would serve portions of the other route, like the six forty-one, six forty-two, six forty-three. These roads currently have. Additional, serve additional areas beyond the train station in Old Sabre. What this would do is in order to make, as you can see sort of right here, this is six forty-two, here's the forty-one, you know, here's the forty-three. Right? So we're basically going to be slicing off the route, these routes at the train station, they start and stop at the train station. The six four would then pick up that the service area is lost. So six forty allows the other other routes to end a little bit earlier. Which helps us on time, but also allows these things to start and stop at the old subway train station. And this new six forty route would basically serve the areas potentially lost. In that, in that, in that change. So again, this this not only serves the areas that would that would be removed from these routes. You know, services lost, it would also then add additional service. Down by the town beaches, Sabre Point, as well as the industrial park here, which we're very excited to serve because. You know, there's been a lot of demand, we know, from the town of Sabre to increase. Rides to to that, they're one of their major employment areas, which is the Old Sabre. Industrial Park area. So that's going to be very important for us as well. And it'll be a pretty short route. So it'll allow us to, you know, to pick up people. So we're excited about that route. We think, we think it'll not only pride new, extend it to new areas and it'll save it, but it'll, it'll really help us actually make the new schedule changes possible. Which we're very excited for and we think will make a huge difference for riders in the end when it comes to. Transferability, simplicity, and overall a more logical and functioning system. So we're very excited about six forty. It'll serve a lot of purposes for us. Six forty-one, so. I'll spend a little time on this one because this is, as many of our nine, ten riders know, this is one of our, one of our most popular routes in the entire system and. Definitely our most popular route in the shoreline area. So. You know, we didn't want to change too much of this route. It's already performing well. It's already hitting. A lot of places that people use for work and school and it's it's already a very successful route. But we did need, we do know that right now, you know, it it runs, it can run late and, you know, we have two vehicles operating. At least to 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 service route on time with the current frequency it has. And right now we're noticing the entire runtime is around an hour and fifteen. In order to make this new schedule work, we need to get to under an hour or get to an hour, under an hour as as possible. So. With that, we need to find ways to make that happen, right? So the first is, because of the six forty. What we propose here is to reduce, is to stop access to the senior center as well as the Stop and Shop. So I'll pause here. A lot of the feedback we've heard already has been very strong and that we should still keep serving the Stop and Shop. So that's something that we've heard already. Well, if you, if you agree with that, definitely that's a comment as well. But that's something I would just mention that we are well aware of is that, and I think we are leaning towards that as well. So I I would just. You know, please, please look at the comment just in case, but just know that that's something that we've heard a lot of those riders that. Probably will still have to serve the six forty-one because it is such a major stop for six forty-one. So just, you know, just keep that in mind as as I go forward, but. Still, so we'd save some time there with the new routing. And schedule change, even even if we still, even if we still serve Stop and Shop, we'll still save some time there. But we still need, still need to find more time in order to make it work to get, you know, under an hour. So, you know, we'll be in jail, we're talking about mulling over is, you know, as we have two buses operating six forty-one. And we noticed that the Westbrook outlets as well as the Clinton Crossing, while. There is some ridership there. There's not always a lot of ridership and it's often selective and. Especially in the Westbrook outlets, we've seen it, it's can decrease in ridership. And so what, but we still want to serve those areas because we don't, we don't want to leave them behind because we still know that they're important. So. Rather than removing one of the, one of the, you know, rather than removing Westbrook outlets. We have planned instead, sort of have one bus serve the Clinton trains, the Clinton Crossing, excuse me, one have, one have it serve the. Transfer bus and one have the, one have one bus serve the Westbrook outlets, excuse me. So. That way, you know, the service is still maintaining those areas and having to cut one of them. And it would still be frequent, it would still, it would have very minimal impact on the, on the rider itself. But it would also allow the bus to get on, potentially get under an hour as well, because it takes a lot of time. To get to the Clinton Crossing Mall, there's a lot of time to get to the outlet. So if. The bus one has to go to one of those two and it's run, it might actually be able to get to under now, it might make the entire schedule work. So. Yeah, we have, we have to get creative here of how we can make it work, have everything fit together. But. Again, all the major destinations are still here. Overall, there isn't changing too much. We know it's a very successful route. We don't want, we don't change it too much. Those are the kind of things we're playing with to make sure we can get under, under an hour to make the entire schedule system work and make, improve the entire system in the shoreline, right? So. That's what we're after. We're really excited about it. I'll also mention too, we're also, we work with CT Transit and we're working with the schedule. To also make sure that we can try our best to make sure the two oh one, CT Transit two oh one to New Haven transfers also maintained well. And so if we can get to an hour, it can also make that transfer a lot more likely to happen. So it's it's very important that we. Do this and, you know, it's not ideal that we have it on either end, but it should have a minimal impact for most riders. We'll still serve these still, these two locations and it'll allow us to keep the two oh one and introduce new schedules. So. Again, all the, all these reasons why, you know, these changes are necessary in our, in our mind anyway, to make this system work. So again. Works out of this one, this forty-one, and we know it's, it's a, it's a great route as it is. So again, here's some examples of what it would look like. Again, you can see, you know, for westbound, potentially it'd be the Clinton Crossing Mall, we wouldn't go there. And on the eastbound, we maybe might go to the West person like that. So again, we have minimal impact to the rider, but it would still. We still serve the areas and it'll still be a way to get there, which, which is important because we do want to remove these locations because even though we're seeing. We don't want to remove, you know, a shopping mall, obviously. So. That's one thing we're kind of working with. Again, if you have any other ideas, get more creative on that. We'd love to hear it too. So if there are any other ways we can save time. Without impacting people's service, please let us know. So. Next, I'll talk about six forty-two. So. Like the other routes, as you can see, it was mentioned earlier. You know, you can see here, it has some existing, it serves some areas outside of the train station. With this new proposed schedule, it would stop there at the train station again. So it stops and starts there. Another, another big change is that we'd be removing the Ivoryton optional branch. Right now, it's by request to go into Ivoryton. You know, if someone made that request in this new routing, it would sort of potentially. Ruin the entire scheduling and make it come in late and kind of. Really had, and have a negative impact on the system. You also don't see a ton of people using it. And even when people use it today, it still has a negative impact on our scheduling and and getting on time and on time performance. So. It's something that we don't see a lot of people using. And also we'll have that the pre-negative impact of most of the riders who aren't using it, right? So it's sort of one of the things if your bus delay is one person wants to use it. Every once in a while and you're late to work or you're late to an appointment, it's, it's not great for everybody else. So it's one of those things that it's a trade off. So I had to get the lights back on again. There we go. It is, it is a trade off, but. We think it's, it's, it's one to make sure we can have the on time performance you want. As well as make the tech system work. So those are the two major changes. Again, it's sort of the stopping at the old hitter train station. Getting that service, we'll pick up about a six forty, so that service won't be lost. So their point will still be hit. Those are hit by that six forty instead, not not the six forty-two. So there would be a transfer there. All right, so that's the six forty-two. I'll then go into the six forty-three. So. The six forty-three, six forty-four both have similar issues and traumas and I want to hide at this point because we've got a lot of good constructive feedback from folks already on this. So the major sort of thing we heard from six forty-three is many people, you know, a couple of years ago in the public feedback, when people wanted. More direct service from New London to Old Sabre, right? So in our current route on the top here. We go through Old Lime, down the coast, go back up, go into the North Old Lime up here. There's, there's some, you know, there's some, you know, condos and parts down here and then come all the way back, excuse me. But we noticed is that many people asked for more direct service. This is what, this is what more direct service looks like. We would still maintain stocks at the old line marketplace, but then we mostly go on old, we go on ninety-five, be a lot faster, we get to London a lot quicker. Okay, it's something that many people want, I mean, want to get to New London, go to Old Sabre or vice versa. However, a lot of the comments we've seen so far have had, have had some issue with the removal of this service here for old line. Right? So we're not, we're not ignoring that because that is a significant issue. So. This one, I'm getting at here is that we want to hear from you on on this route because. We're sort of torn, just like, you know, we see, we see merit to both. We see the merit of a, of a faster service to New London and Old Sabre. We also see the merit of of having this local route as well, sort of to have, you know, have it. Act more as a local route that also goes to London how it is today. So again, all the reasons we want your feedback, either direction. So if you feel strongly about, you think it'd be a more efficient service. To go as almost, almost an express route, not quite, but a faster route to New London or think, hey, you know. I I use the old line service or I know people who use it, we want to keep that. Less, no, this is the kind of things that we can still change and tweak, right? So it's important that. Or to be honest, here are the trade offs, right? It's, it's one or the other. It's sort of how it is. We wish we could do, do it all, but this is sort of the, the cards were dealt, this is how it works. So it's either. You know, the more local service or the more direct service. And and we can still tweak this, maybe find a happy medium zone, but. Those are the essential trade offs we're dealing with here. So again, please feel free to give any comments on these. And 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 sort of what your preference is. And if you're a rider especially, we'd love to hear you, your preference on that if you ride the six forty-three. All right. So with the six forty-four, it's a very similar boat. In fact, we've got a lot similar comments where. We wanted, people said they wanted a more direct service from Old Sabre to Miltown. We've also heard people say. Well, it's all still in a little bit. So what the route would look like here throughout today. As you know, we go, we who ride this before we go through Chester, up through Haddon, Higginham, and then up through Miltown, right? This Haddon Center, Higginham Center. The new proposed route would be mostly the same, except for when we get to around Chester here, where then we would go San Route nine. So we'd stay on the highway. And then we come up here and then we get on to one fifty-one. And now Sabre Road. And we'd still would hit Higginham Center, but we would lose this portion here in Haddon. Okay, it's already seen comments the effect that people are concerned that, you know, we're losing service here, which is, which is definitely legitimate concern. So again. It's a very similar debate here, this is forty-three where this will be, this new route will be a faster service. It'll take less time to get there, it'll be a more direct service. But we would, but we would lose the service here, right? And that is also important to people as well. So again, and we do notice there's some ridership here, not a ton. So again, it's, it's that classic, it's the debate we we grapple with, right? It's finding what's the best route for the most amount of people. And we want to hear your, your comments on this. So these will really help us, trust me, we're not, we're not joking here. Your feedback on this will definitely help us make our decision. We've already gotten a lot of great feedback so far. And so we want to continue that, you know, to get as many, as much as we can. And again, beyond this meeting, we'll do more route rides and so we'll talk to riders of the route. But again, we really want to hide the fact that we do want your feedback on this. It's very important. So this is sort of the trias we're dealing with and we're just trying to be as transparent as possible. This is what we're looking at. You know what I mean? This is sort of the behind the scenes look up. At what it is to look at these routes. So please, again, give us feedback on this. Finally, I'll start with the six forty-five, which. It's not changing a whole lot. It's mostly just changing, if you look at the bottom there. So instead, it currently operates through Boston Post Road here. Then comes up to the train station and then goes to, you know, the Clinton Crossing Mall and then goes all the way up to Miltown, right? What we're looking to change here is have it go on I ninety-five instead of Old Bos, Bos, Bos Road. Yes, it'll save us maybe five minutes to make and improve the on time performance a lot more. So allow us to get. The Miltown faster and the Madison faster. So it'll improve the on time performance of the, of the S six forty-five. It'll also all mention too, it's hard to tell on the map, it still serves the Clinton Crossing Mall as well. So you should know that it's not being removed, it's still hit there. It would remove the portion that include the train station. Unfortunately, as many of our writers may know, the Clint transition is not very well equipped to deal with transit. Unfortunately, it wasn't designed very well for us to to serve. And the six three one will still serve the train stations. So don't worry, there's still access there. It's more to improve this route as we see it more of a regional route to get from Madison to Miltown and vice versa, right? So. This is six forty-one sort of operates, is the more local route throughout the shoreline. This is more of a route that gets you to from Madison to Miltown. And obviously, people use it for other things, of course, which is great, but that's sort of the main purpose of it that we see in our eyes. The last small change I'll say too is. Remember I mentioned a bidirectional, that will also happen up here in Miltown. Right now, it's sort of, you come up one way and come down the other. We'd have it as one same direction on that Sabre Roads, you could still have access, you know, the. The Community College right here, the Medical Center. So it'd be, again, that both sides of the street would also be operating there. All right, so that was a lot of talking. So I'm gonna have some water here as well. So. I will be taking a look at our Facebook as well. So I will. Back at this position a second. But once we do this, I'll finish my presentation here, take a look at the questions. I'll stay on Zoom. I'll try and answer them if there are any in the chat or any in the Facebook Live. If you have any other information as well and have any feedback, please fill out the survey. Again, that's on. It's where transit district slash search terms, you can see on the bottom there. I'll also drop it in the Facebook app as well, so folks can give their, give their input. Again, it's also recorded as well. So if you're watching this and you've gotten to the end of the video, make sure you fill out that survey really right on the website. You'll see right there, there'll be a big button. Please click that and fill it out. And that's our best way for feedback. And also mentioned too, it's not the end, and you'll be also be doing more recordings this week. I'll be doing plenty more. You might see me out there if, if, if I'm driving, say hello. I'll be also clicking feedback on tables, route rides, you name it, other events. So I'll be round. So. You know, say hello if you see me out there and let me know your feedback as well. And so computer will also be open for many weeks going forward. So if not months, so it's not going to close anytime soon. Tell your friends, tell your family who also use the service or should have their input heard. Again. The more, I, I, I'm beating a dead horse, the more feedback we have, the better we can make the routes. So please, you tend to do that. And thank you all for coming. And again, it really is critical to help us determine the final version of this route. So I'm not going to end the meeting right now. I'm going to stop my share. Okay? And then I'm going to look at some of the comments here on Facebook and see if we have any. If we don't, that's okay too, but I'll take a quick look. See, yes, people watching, which is great. I like to see that. Getting a look at this for a transit page here. I don't know, Jeff, if you've seen anything as well, since it's popped up to you and look, taking a look right now myself.
Yeah, we've been responding online.
Oh, great.
Well, so. And I'll just mention two, let's see, at least one. Before you here, we perhaps dedicate sessions for, for, for your feedback too, or. Brendan will be.
Yes.
Be around to collect employee feedback, because we know that's really important as well.
Absolutely. Yes, I've talked with many of the staff from Miltown, but I have more to talk to you as well. I need to head down to the shoreline as well to do that as well. So I'll be talking to. Employees and and riders as well, so drivers as well. So that'll be a good opportunity to to get some firsthand feedback there as well. And also mentioned too, we have also reached out to community organizations. So we've reached out to, you know, Nelson Community College and 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 major employers and Coalition of Hungry and Homeless, as we've talked to. So we're talking as many people as we can. To really get a sense for how it would impact their, their, their clients. And so we're doing the best we can to hear from everybody and people as we can on this. Are there any remaining questions that are unresolved or? Trying to see. Good, this is recording. Happy, happy recording. That's good.
One of the questions is, when will we be doing in-person outreach in Miltown?
Oh, sure. That's a great question. So I've done a few tables already at the terminal. I'll be doing more in the future, also doing route rides. I say, for the most part, we have our free postings this week, so I'll be busy with those. But coming up. I'd say in early April into April and even into May, I'll be, I'll be out and about. Again, I'm not, I'm not be at the exact, you know, be everywhere all at once, but I'll be doing a lot of different tables, a lot of different routes. So if I don't see you. You know, I, I apologize, but I will be out a lot. So if you don't see me. Make sure to fill out, sure raise information online as well. It's a good information source there, but I'll be out and about, especially in April. So stay tuned for that as well.
We will be posting it on our social media.
Yes.
And also, if you haven't already signed up for our email newsletter. We, we send that out with. So we should definitely sign up, go to our website.
That's a great way to stay up to date with all our different changes. As you know, we have a lot of new changes coming down the line. You know, our, our new brand coming out, you know, on Tuesday. So lots of exciting changes as well as these proposed route changes. So. So much going on. It's a great opportunity to follow the, the, see what's, what's happening. So definitely recommend that. So definitely recommend that. One thing I'll mention too is that we'll also, we will try and be doing, you know, having these tables and route riding at different times of the day, right? Because you know, different riders. Some use the morning routes and use the afternoon routes. So we will try our best to also. Hit, hit the widest time varieties as well as locations, right? So bring to our best to try and. Doctor as many people as we can. We've already talked to, we already got, see fifty, fifty feedback forums are, which is exciting. We hope to get even more. We'll definitely get more. So we've already gotten some good feedback and. Even with fifty, we're already growing some great ideas. So with, you know, more and more, we'll have a lot of great ideas. So. Yeah, we're, we're definitely excited to hear from everybody. And I'll, I'll mention too, I really appreciate the feedback so far. Feedback has been very constructive for the most part. You know, even if people have issues, they've been very polite and been very to the point and it's been very helpful for us to see. So, you know. If, if, if you, one thing I'll, I'll mention too is that. If 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 you, one thing I'll mention too is that if you like the changes. Put put those in there as well because because we haven't decided things. So if you want, if you like a new route, you know, make sure you support it. And if you don't like any route, let us know that too, right? So please. Pros and cons, you want to hear both. Or if you're indifferent, that's okay too. But we want to hear it all. So make sure you definitely fill out those surveys. I will also drop it in the chat. I see here. I think I have it copied. Yep, I think that's the website. I can drop that in the chat as well. Yeah, there we go. Okay. So that's the Middletown one and I'll move to Nine Town and also do that. We're juggling a couple of different pages here today. So I apologize if there's a little bit of lag time. All right. And then I will drop it in here as well. Okay. Great. There any other questions that were out there? Do you see enough for the five eighty two? That's good. Like to see that. Wait, the five eighty two too, we think it'll be even better. Once we're within writing, we're we're excited about the changes coming with the five eighty two. We also know there's some concerns with the new route and the new route design as well. So we're addressing those as well. But yeah, five eighty two is. Excellent. All right. Well, I don't see too many more comments coming in, but if I'm wrong, please let me know. I'll I'll still wait on for a couple more minutes here in no rush. Thank you, everybody for watching too. I hope I didn't go on for too long. But again, we wanted to make sure we really give everybody as much information as we could. So hopefully we did that. Again, this recording will be will be uploaded to our search change web, search change page in our website. So. Do you want to watch it again or share with your friends or whatever it is? We'd appreciate that too. So it'll be up there at some point in the near future as well. So. Yeah. Again, if you do see me out and about, stop by, say hello. And and we should have some new, I even have some new swag from a new brand as well coming out next couple of weeks too. So. Be on the lookout for that. All the reason to come by and stop by at one of our tables. We're talking on the bus. So. Yeah. All right. Well. I see those questions. We'll just be up in the shore in our Middletown. This will be up on the Estuary Transit site. So it'll be up on the combines. If you type either one, it should it should pop up. And it'll be on the search change portion. So there's there's a little tab on the top right. That's just proposed service changes. You click on that, it should be, it'll be up there at some point.
My question about the routing.
Oh, great. Okay.
Not sure which route for a bus coming down.
All right, let me, I what I'm going to do is I'll I have Google Maps pulled up and see it's going. Into COVID drive and going into the garage or North Main Street.
I have this question, which bus does you?
Oh, which bus does that? Okay.
That'd be the five eighty four.
Five eighty four.
Down North Main Street.
Okay. Yes, yes. And I see a good share as well for the new bus design coming out on April fourth too. That'll be exciting. Yeah, that'll be exciting. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, it'll be there in April. The new bus will be there. We wanted more, but we have, we have time. We have, it'll be a shuttle bus ready to go for April fourth and then. Over the coming months, we'll slowly see them start to have our new branding on there as well as it'll take it takes some time to get these things on there. So you'll see it slowly be unveiled as the days go on. But we're very excited with the design. We think you guys will love it. I know, I know I'm excited about anyway. So. Looking forward to unveiling that to everybody. Yeah, we'll have a new website and everything else. So it'll be, it'll be good. We've been sitting on it a while, so it'll be good to reveal to everybody. So working on it hard. So. Yep. But I can't show you right now, but I can give you a little, a little hint. You know, it's got. I actually don't know how much I can tell you, but I I think I think you'll like, I'll I'll I'll. I'll I'll wait till the fourth or we don't want to ruin the surprise, but. I think people will like it and. Yeah, we'll leave you, leave you guessing until then. So. I think probably what we'll do is if, sorry, it sounds good to you, Joe, probably just sit here till eight eight P M. That sounds good. See if more questions come in. I'm checking the different pages right now. Middletown seems to be the most active right now. It's a good question, Mike. Where can we, where can you go to see the new bus? So. I think yes, it'll be unveiling at the.
April fourth, two o'clock.
Yeah.
At our operations center, North Main Street.
Ninety one North Main Street.
Here on our email list. We'll be sending out the invite. In the coming days.
Excellent. Exciting. Good. Yeah, the more the merrier and you'll probably also see it hopefully driving around at some point too. So and you'll see more like that as well coming in in the future. Turn by turn directions available for any of the pros. So we turn by turn, I can potentially get you Billy. I do have the all, I have them all digitized. So I have them all. On a map, how they would go and you know, sort of how the routing would go. So I could look at getting some of that together. It takes some time to get together, but I could probably get that together. But I definitely do have like. Files showing where the routes go, you know, on a map. So you can see exactly where it's going. Yeah, no, it's pretty cool. Happy happy to show you that sometime for sure. For sure. I see Mike's question there. It's the A three six four transit transfer bus. So so the new. The new design is going to be unveiled on a new shuttle bus we have. So a new, it's a twelve seater, a new twelve seater shuttle bus. That'll be have the new branding on it. So. It will be the CT Transit one, but it'll be. The. The a new, the new shuttle buses. They'll have the design on there. You know, there's a lot of information. So there's, there goes the lights again. That's that's my, my, I think my cue. But, uh. Yes, Sunday and Saturday night service. Yeah, that's what you mean, my right, that Sunday, Saturday night service. Yeah, I mean. It's that it might might be possible in the future, I think, potentially. There might be some good news in that hopefully in the future, but we'll see. But. Yeah, we we want that as well. We definitely, that would be a big improvement, right? I I agree. Absolutely. I I agree. Yep. We know that, you know. I know FedEx is working, you know, around the clock on 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 Friday and Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday and. Other jobs too, of course, work. So I'm chatting. I agree. And I think that, you know, that might, that hopefully will be a possibility soon, hopefully. To to increase some Saturday service and maybe even introduce some new service, but we'll have to wait and see. But. Yeah, exactly. Right. If you need to see friends and family, recreation, you know. Going out downtown, getting going to restaurants, whatever you need to do, right? So I agree. I think that there definitely be demand for. For services on Saturday and Sunday and all, frankly, all it comes down to is is funding and, you know. Finding drivers and staffing. So that there's lots that goes into it, but we definitely agree that, you know, we, you know, it would definitely be a big improvement. For a lot of folks to have, you know, improved Saturday service and Sunday service. Yeah. Definitely agree. All right. So I guess if I'll I'll put up one last call for any service proposed service change questions. I'll do one last round of these Facebook pages here. And then if there's nothing else, I think. I might call it a night. But again, I'll remind folks that. Tomorrow at the Clinton Town Hall of Green Room from six thirty onward, there'll be a meeting. Come to that on in Middletown on Thursday at six P M at the City Hall Council Room will also be a part of it. So if you want to kind of. Get the in person version, I'm going to say it's going to be the same information, same PowerPoint. But if you want to come and stop by. Maybe happy to have you. So the more the merrier the way I say it. So. That's fine too. So I'm checking Nine Town. Don't listen to anything there. I'll check our other pages. Yeah, we're all good on that end. And then Middletown. All right. All right. So I think I with that, I will officially adjourn the meeting here at eight oh three. P M. But again, I want to thank everybody for coming by. And again, this will be up at some point on that service change. Estuary Transit dot org slash search change where it's where you find the almond surveys. Please fill them out. That hundred times today, but I I do mean it. And also this video will be on there at some point as well. All right. Thank you very, very much. Have a great night.